To order, please. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we get a roll call, please?
Mr. Caputo.
Present.
Mr. Zirkin.
Here.
Ms. Gascot.
Here.
Ms. Roska.
Here.
Mr. Novak.
Here.
Mr. Williams.
Here.
Ms. Aylott.
Ms. Oma's Aylott's time. She's under the weather.
First on our agenda is recognitions, and I see a full house, so.
Yes, recognizing a lot of students tonight. So, I would like, we would like to recognize the ILMEA District 1 musicians. So, congratulations to the following RB students selected for the Illinois Music Education Association District 1 Senior Band, Senior Chorus, Senior Jazz Band, Senior Orchestra, and Senior Vocal Jazz Ensemble. Thousands of students participated in an audition process to be chosen, and those selected will spend a day collaborating with conductors in large ensembles resulting in several festival performances. The Senior Concert Festival is on Saturday, November 8th, at Elmhurst University, and the Senior Jazz Festival will be on Saturday, November 15th, at Argo Community High School. So, you got a lot of names. So, I would like to recognize the following students, and I will have my student advisors help me out here. First up for Senior Band is Tabitha Relly. Alex Schreier. Vittorio Shaka. And then, congratulations. And then for Senior Chorus, we have Amore Allende. Jadeo Alvarez. Henry Bacchus. Battistoni. Benjamin Buscio. Emma Busimi. John Decker. Andy Ginder. Mackenzie Joseph. Aidan McKenna. Sophie Moran. Zachary Soucy. Amelia Willhype. Iris Williams. And Lena Ren. Now on the Senior Jazz Band, oh, we have more, Zoe Boulter. Dylan Bull. For Senior Orchestra, we have Zoe Boulter again. If God recognizes, if you will be recognized again, you don't have to come up again. Quinn Drumheller. And Michaelo Rurka. For Senior Vocal Jazz, we have Benjamin Buscio. And John Decker. Mr. Baum, Mr. Loeb, or Ms. Matana, would you like to come up?
Mr. Baum, sir.
And say a few things?
Ms. Matana, Mr. Loeb.
As Ms. Fletcher said, it's an incredible honor to be selected for District 1. A lot of kids try out, and they don't ever get to make it. But some of these kids, they're going for their first time. Tabitha made it for three times in a row, so she's an incredible musician. It's a lot of hard work. They get started in the summer. Some of them get started in the spring, and they keep going all the way through the fall. Their auditions are October 1st. I want to thank the board for funding those auditions in our dues and fees accounts. Not only are you helping these kids get the auditions in, but they're also paying for the festival itself. So, thank you for supporting their music education, and I want to thank the kids for all the hard work that you did. Not only is it great to get into the ensemble, but the hard work that you all put in is pushing all of our ensembles and all of your peers more and more. So, keep up the good work and enjoy your festivals.
I know, it was well said. Just, there's a large number in front of you. I come from another high school, because at least my private experience, we were very proud to send one to. We have a very strong music program. The students you have behind us are the best of the best. I guess you could say it, this is, our districts are broken into nine districts. We are of the greater Chicago, so you must understand, they're competing with some of the best, and so, they may be all-staters, we might be in front of you, and then I'll tell you, it's the best of the best of the best. The work that they are about to go and perform, if you have a chance, just tune in for 10 seconds. Everything's live streamed right now. I can tell you, orchestras are gonna be doing like a Beethoven symphony. That's just mind-boggling. It's an hour, you know, hour piece. I don't think they planned the entire thing, but just go check it out, please, please. It's, the high level of musicianship that's behind me is next to none, especially for high school level.
Mr. Loeb, Mr. Loeb's time, the time we paint good piano?
Oh, yes. You know, it's always the, there's always, the piano's great.
Okay.
Piano is great, but you know, when you buy.
Butt, that's a butt.
When you buy something that you've never tried out before until, you know, the bid comes in and everything, I think we got, that is the best time we be, I've played on, and I've played on at least 30, 40 of them, so it's, it's a work of art.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Students, families, teachers, we will step outside for some pictures, and that concludes recognitions for this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Fletcher. Thank you, guys. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you for coming.
Student Association, you ready?
Well, yeah.
Okay.
We personally want to start by saying thank you so much for having us here tonight. We're all very eager to be here. We have five out of the six NACL members here tonight. This year, we continue to really prioritize school spirit and working with the community. We really love collaborating with different clubs and like, different, like, sports. We have already started doing some different projects, like the St. Jude's Walk this year. That was on September 27th, and so many different students showed up. It was really a great turnout. RB alone raised $5,000 for cancer research at St. Jude. It was really great to see everybody come together for such a great cause, and I think it really shows how great the RB community is to show up for something like that.
Yeah, a little bit more recap what we did doing. Early October, we had our first blood drive of the year. It was amazing. We collected over 55 pints of blood, which is amazing. Comparing it to the past years, previous years, we're doing about the same, if not even better, so we hope to continue that level of involvement through the staff and all students. It's something to be extremely proud of. It takes a lot of courage to put yourself out there and donate that blood for other people. It's a self-attack, and it's amazing to see that RB can take in something like that. Our next blood drive is gonna be held on February 11th, and we hope to have the same level of involvement, if not more. Another recap, this past weekend, we had our leadership conference at LT. RB took a handful of students to leadership conference. It was held at LT on Friday, this past Friday. The conference had over 750 students from all over Illinois, from a bunch of different schools. It was amazing to see how many students there were. We had several speakers talk to us about how to be a genuine leader, how to be yourself, how to stand out to other people. We learned about what other schools are doing and how we can collaborate with other students, and just, we had time to share ideas with other schools. It was an amazing thing. I know I went the past two years, and I know Sophia's gone all four pair years, and many students really loved it, so we hope to share that with our group tomorrow morning and talk a little bit more with them.
Now touching on our future events we're having, this week, we're actually having a Halloween little scavenger hunt event, which we all came in this morning early and made little Halloween goodie bags with different types of candy, Halloween-like pretzels, pencils and erasers, and Thursday morning, we're gonna hide 100 Halloween-themed bulldogs, like little cutouts, around the school, in the hallways, and tell, allow the students to go find them, and once they go find them, they can go to the main office to receive a goodie bag, and it's just a little fun way to get our students involved, have a fun day right before Halloween and the Halloween-themed football game we have on Friday. So, yeah, we did this last year, too. The SA exec floor planned this last year, and it was a huge hit. Everyone loved going around the school, finding like, little bulldog, and they get a little goodie bag, so we decided to carry it on this year, and yeah, we hope it's as much of a success as it was last year.
Okay, and then coming up this Wednesday, we're having a fundraiser at Bolero. It's two hours of free bullying, and all we ask is that everyone that come donates $5 to Student Association, which we are putting towards buying supplies for our Thanksgiving baskets that are coming up soon, and as well as all the SA members that are coming, we're also trying to get teachers, sports, clubs, and activities involved with it, and I know already a few teachers have planned on coming, so we're just super excited about that coming up this Wednesday. And then, that Thursday morning, during our regular real time, we're decorating the school for Veterans Day, so we will be decorating the comments area with streamers and Hall friends and red and blue merch, and then that following week, we will be doing cards for veterans during all lunches, and then Thursday morning, which is just a little table we have set up where students can come, write a note to the veterans, and all those cards will be dropped off at the Fisher House, and we'd like to thank Ms. Matt Mindoff for helping out with that. She's done so much for that this year and in previous years, and I've been doing without her, so we're so grateful for her.
And then looking a little bit more into the future, I know Violet touched on it a little bit, but we have our Thanksgiving baskets that we partner with CSS, which is Community Service, or, yeah, Community Support Services, where we partner with, or they partner with individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities, so that they can get the resources that they need to have, you know, a good Thanksgiving experience. So, we hope to create 20-plus baskets, just like we did last year with a bunch of different clubs, activities, and sports teams. Yeah, SA loves doing it. We like to get involved and help others in the community. And then, on top of that, we're doing our coat and blanket drive, which is a little bit more like towards the holiday season, where we have bins around the school, and we publicize donating things like coats, blankets, winter hats, winter gloves, that goes towards the Salvation Army to help those in need during the wintertime, and we think, you know, both these things are a great way to get SA involved in the community, not only in RB, but also in the surrounding community, and.
That's about it.
Thank you. Does the board have any questions?
So, we have one meeting in November, correct?
One meeting in November.
And your baskets, they, when do you distribute them?
The food drive.
We're still picking a specific date, I know, for the Thanksgiving baskets. It's usually towards the last few weeks. I think it's the week before Thanksgiving. We still are picking a certain date, but we're in between two right now.
So, at least when we come back, we will, if not already delivered them, but have made like, good progress, like buying supplies, or maybe even starting making them.
Okay, so.
November 11th.
I will bring our basket, and anybody who wants to contribute to our basket, just maybe just see me. Our Arianeal basket, such a small little part.
Thank you, Student Association.
Thanks.
Thank you. Yeah, next we have, our parent organizations are here tonight to give us an update, and I believe first on our list is the Athletic Boosters. Come on up. That's the spot.
Hi, everybody. My name's Sean Semino. I'm the president of the Boosters for this year. Just for those of you who don't know, Boosters are basically like an extension of the athletic department, so we raise funds to supplement the athletic department's annual budget. We have a lot of participation with Phil Torres, the athletic director, and his staff. Great partnerships there, and then we do a lot of work with a bunch of other people, Kylie, the administration. We just want to say thank you all for the support that you give to athletics here in RB and to the Boosters. We really appreciate it. I know a lot of you volunteers, even people who are up here in the room here as well, so thank you for that. We're gonna run through really quickly. I gave you three pages that we can look at. The second one, we'll talk about last year, just kind of how things went, and then we'll turn the page and look to this year and just talk a little bit about how we're doing. So, as far as last year went, I just want to give a quick shout-out to the board that recently rolled off. So, Jenny Royer, who was, you know, around for a very long time with Boosters, did a phenomenal job, along with Julie Novak, Erin Lenahan, Michelle Ruska, and Stacy Doyle. They just did a phenomenal job with the relationships and just driving kind of the cause for Boosters, so we thank them for that. We had a really good year in '23, '24. There was a pretty large donation that we meant to help, or that we made to help fund the weight room improvements. We followed that up in '24, '25 with another really good year. Just, we'll talk a little bit as far as like, how we raise the money, and then how it gets spent. The chart on the left, that's kind of how we bring things in, and concessions are by far and away, you can see, the number-one way that we do it, it's almost 50% of the money that we bring in is based on concession sales. That's followed up pretty quickly by membership, and then spirit wear. Bulldog Menance is pretty big, and then we've got a lot of small stuff as well, but what I will say is that between concessions and between the spirit wear sales, that's where our volunteers are just so important. So, we had over 108 volunteers, individual volunteers, last year that worked for Boosters. Almost 1,000 hours of volunteer time to help drive those sales and concessions and spirit wear, so just phenomenal efforts by the, just the area, the people here to help drive that. The way that we spend the money, the way that we deploy it, is we work with Phil to develop a budget, and as you can see in the chart on the right, that starts to talk to where it goes. So, durable goods, like uniforms and warmups, equipment, those types of things that can be reused year over year, that's where we're really trying to go with the money. Last year, that's exactly kind of where half of it went, which was great. We had several different sports teams that got funding for uniforms. Football was by far and away the biggest, but we had pretty large donations that went to Poms, girls volleyball, baseball, as well as girls basketball, and a couple other smaller teams as well. We also had the opportunity to fund a permanent fixture in the weight room, so an award board they put up, that was something that Coach Kirby came and asked the Boosters for. We were able to just support that request, which was great. So, and then the other thing that I think is really important, that hopefully a lot of people know about, is that we do fund scholarships. So, last year, we were able to give 20 student athletes at RB a scholarship stipend, so that was right over $10,000 worth of money for seniors, student athletes in the class of '25, so just really, really awesome stuff, and it was just a great year for '24 and '25. So, now I turn to the page, next one here is just '25, '26. We kind of gauge how we're doing so far just based on memberships. Last year, we had 312. There was a target of 300. We were at 302 as of October 15th, so when you look at like over lifetime, we had 277 year prior, so we're actually up 25 memberships, so that's just great to see. The dollars are up about 1,000, just it's, the membership mix is kind of what's driving the difference. We're doing a lot more with senior memberships, which I think is just a great, great thing, so we're really proud of that. We've had really good concession sales so far this year, as well as spirit wear sales, and then we're gonna get a bonus night on Friday night, which is just awesome. Go Dogs, can't wait to see everyone there for the game on Halloween. And based on all that funding that's come in, we've got already, we've already processed 25,000 in funding requests. There's one particular that I do want to call out, because this was just, I think, a great way that we could partner with people. We had a private donor that came to the football coach and said, "Do you guys have guardian caps?" And if you're not familiar with what a guardian cap is, it's kind of hard to see the picture overall. I just want to say, sorry about how small the presentation is, I know it's a little bit of an eye chart, but the guardian caps are basically a concussion prevention mechanism that you wear on top of your football helmet. So, the team hadn't had those yet, the kids could buy them for themselves, but it wasn't something that we supported as a team, so this donor stepped up and said, "Hey, I can fund 50." We were able to see that and say, "Hey, you know what? Is that enough? Can we add to it?" Which we were able to, so we bumped that up to 100, which would cover just about, you know, most of the kids in the program when they're practicing, so we matched that funding. We were able to get the 100 guardian caps, and I just think it's a great, great win. You know, concussion prevention is just really important, and I think, you know, it's great for the kids, it's great for the team, and we're happy to do something like that, and it was just kudos to that private donor for stepping up and kind of getting the ball rolling on him. We've had a few unplanned expenses, so we had to get a new freezer this year out in the outdoor concessions. Those things happen, but I think that we feel like really good about the way the rest of the year's gonna go. Hoping to fund scholarships at a similar, a better level than we did last year. And then one area that's gonna be new for us this year, they've done it in the past, but it's been a bit, we're gonna go back to corporate partnerships, we're gonna work with Phil, have some conversations on what's possible, and see if we can't breathe some life into that as well, and see what we can do about partnerships. Hopefully, I kind of kept that somewhat brief, but if you have any questions or any comments, happy to take them.
Thank you. Questions, anyone?
Just comment, the spirit wear has been a blast. I mean, my family's all decked out, you know, and I love the flannel and the sweatshirts coming to the game in flannel gym. It's so much fun, because it just makes you feel so much a part of, you know, everyone's got a piece of, you know, RB paraphernalia, something on, you know, so thank you for doing that.
Oh, absolutely, yeah, happy to, and we know it goes back to the kids, and we're happy to do it.
Yeah, and it's fun to come home geared up.
Let the board know, based on review of the website as required by policy, certificate of insurance is posted and might need to be updated for this year.
Got it.
501(c)(3) status is there. Current bylaws, they have a '25, '26 day, where you have their September treasurer's report, so they're in compliance with the board policy in regards to that. So, thank you again for everything.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you so much. Next on our list, we have the Music and Theater Sponsors.
Hello.
Hello. My name is Neomede Telepis, and I'm the president of Music and Theater Sponsors this year, and Kelly Farbach has been really involved as a marching band, parent, volunteer extraordinaire. She's co-vice president of music with Carla Highland, who is not here this evening, and then co-vice presidents of theater are Sarah Clark and Kathy Ginder, whose daughter was in the ILMEA list, and then Jessica O'Neil is our treasurer. She's here, her son was also ILMEA, and then we have co-secretaries Liz Buscio and Michelle Palahas Olsen, who are not able to be here tonight. So, there are two pages that I shared with you. We're just, I'm just gonna highlight what's going on. We have 152 members representing 96 families this year. They are not all RBHS. Some are just community members who support music and know that they want to be part of what we're doing. The overall summary for last year, which is in detail down the treasurer's report, is 46,000 in income, 45,000 in expenses, and an end balance of 9,356. I'm gonna, instead of talking through the treasurer's report the same way it's sports boosters, I'm just going to give you the narrative, because it talks about some of the highlights of what was happening with our budget. So, the first thing we are really proud of was that we were able to award $10,000 in scholarships at the end of last year for students to continue studying music or theater over the summer. So, that was the largest amount we've ever been able to donate. The year before, it was $8,000. And those are available to students who are not gonna be graduating that year, so freshmen, sophomores, and juniors to keep going, lessons, or camps, or whatever they pitched. They, it was an application process. So, the other thing we did last year was purchase live streaming equipment for the music department. Actually, in the recent past, we had a family that would be doing the live streaming themselves because they have their own equipment, but that was dependent on that family, you know, being here and live streaming the jazz, so now we purchased it so that every concert can be livestreamed, so, you know, my parents are in Arizona, like, if anybody has family that's not here, they could see it. So, it does take some extra work to get that stuff going, but with the tech, sound tech, and the theater kids, we were able to help out with some of that. We increased our overall income by $14,000 over the previous year. That was attributed to, we created a higher-level membership, $100, where, last year, where people would get reserve, opportunity to get a raffle for reserved priority seating, and it was also just a way to say, "Hey, come in as a higher-level sponsor, and it'll help do more for the kids." Last year, we did a lot with concessions. We raised $9,000, almost $10,000 in concessions last year. We split days with some of the other PTA groups at the football game, selling popcorn, and then we have our own merchandise, which does well, too. For last year, we, and we've done this for the last four years, is that Patrick Williams and Kara Kesselring have hosted a Labor Day party to kind of kick off the community in music and theater, and so we did that again this year, had a really great turnout. It's a nice way for parents to meet parents, kids to see kids, and to bring people together performing music. We have a solid leadership plan with two people in almost every position. We're looking for a shadow president, if anybody's interested. We, let's see, I guess I'm gonna focus, I'm gonna move over to focusing on improvement and ongoing and new challenges, because I know one of the things you guys wanted to know is, how can you help us more, right? So, communication, we want to thank Dr. Freitas, who's not here, for attending nearly every sponsors' meeting. So, you know, it's, it's once a month, it's a lot for him at the end of doing everything else he's doing. He's always there to update us on school activities, listen to our concerns, answer our questions, so we just want to say thank you for that. We also want to say thanks to Dr. Skinkis for allowing us to, so the $100 membership level, the increased membership level that I was talking about, we were able to say, "Hey, if you go to that level, you can get into the football game for free instead of half-price," and so, it was just really nice for us to have something that didn't cost us anything to increase, because normally we'll like, throw in another swag item, which costs us money, so we really appreciate that. The other thing I want to say is the, there was a fine arts calendar that, I know Kylie Fletcher was really instrumental in developing that. It was, I meant to bring it with me tonight. Have any of you seen it? It's kind of a purple, see, it didn't get distributed well. We need to get our hands on more of these. You know what I'm talking about. So, it was, it was something that talked, I think it was created for the 125th anniversary of music at Riverside Brookfield High School, but it had all the dance performances, all the music, all the theater, and it listed if it's a ticketed event, if it costs you something, or if it's free, and it had the date and the place, and it was just so beautifully put together, and we thought, wouldn't the whole community that pays for the school want to know about the free fine arts resources in our community? So, one of the ideas we wanted to say would be helpful would be, could we distribute that more widely? Could you guys help pay for distributing it, printing it? Could we make it an annual thing? So, that was one request we had. We wanted to also report on the recruitment activities that we do at the theater schools, because this is really key. Going from middle school to high school is a time when students, if they're, if they're going to, if they're put on, if they're putting themselves in that four-year college track, which you see in the book, you know, that students get when they come to RBHS, it's, it really requests, it said just strongly, that if you want to go to a selective college, that you don't have any, hardly any room in your schedule for electives, and it kind of puts students on a certain track. And it kind of puts students on a certain track, and we want to let them know before they even get here, that if you really care about music and you want to keep going with it, here are some ideas for how you can do that, even taking Spanish, even, you know, taking some of the other classes that you want to take. So we let them know what music's like here at RB. We introduce them to the teachers, we introduce them to the kids. And I know the Triumph Group did some of that as well already this year. So it's just really important for us to have a presence at the theater schools and to have the kids know what it is, so that they have something to look forward to when they come here. Because we keep hearing that it's more and more students are joining band, orchestra, choir at the theater schools, and so we want to make sure that transitions over to RB. And then we were just grateful to have a higher percentage of teacher hours for the music program this year, and we hope that trend continues, because as I said, the numbers coming out of the theater schools, I came out of District 95, and I know they have had some of the highest numbers of kids, sixth graders, seventh graders, eighth graders in band than ever before. And there are new choir teachers that started, just started this year at Hauser and at Comarek, I believe. And so they're rejuvenating, they're rejuvenated at the theater school level, and so we want to make sure that keeps going and trickles up. So we just, and we just had the fabulous choir, what is it called? Where you brought the?
Choir Festival.
Choir Festival, where the middle schoolers came here and sang with the high school students. So anyway, that's, that's the things we're working on. Anybody have any questions about our budget?
Naomi, we have a, so the, could it be mailed to the households in the district? So you're working with Kylie on that? Or we're still?
It was just handed to us, and we loved it so much, so we honestly don't know who paid for it.
Okay, so let's follow up, the three of us will figure out, okay?
Great.
Is that that calendar that she?
Yeah.
So, you know, and I know that there's, you know, if it's a PDF, you could just be, somebody could download and print it themselves, but if it needs to be printed even specially, I know that some printers won't fix it so that people can just pay to have that nice and glossy and printed and sent to them.
Great, thank you.
Just work through Kylie, and she'll.
Kylie's awesome.
Thank you so much.
Of course.
All right.
Let the board know, I checked their website, everything looks up to date. I think their certificate of insurance, just like boosters, is coming to an end, so just please check that, Naomi, about the certificate of insurance. That just protects the district so the community understands and the board understands. We have them do some certificate of insurance, so if they host an event here or if something happens, our liability insurance does require that. Okay, I'm good.
Very good, thank you. Next, we have our parent-teacher organization. Welcome.
Good evening, I'm Julie Lavi, I'm the president of here. And I'm Sara Munoz, I'm a parliamentarian. I'm going to start off by just going down the list of our new, or our members for the PTO, executive board. President, which is Julie Lavi. We have VP of Communications, that's Monique Harden-Cuvas. VP of Membership, Tyra Lockwood. Secretary, Janice Jorgas. Treasurer, Lauren Caruso, and myself as parliamentarian. Just to go over a couple of things that are here. Per Board of Education Policy Manual, RBHS PTO maintains a public website that provides a list of current board members, organization contact information, meeting information, quarterly financial reports, so anything that you need to find or any information, you can find that on the website there. Just to go over briefly, the 24 and 25 financial summary, our beginning balance was $5,118.32. Ending balance for the year was $9,794.82. Currently, our balance is $14,647.68, and just to go over, and the PTO taxes have been filed for 24-year. And I'm going to go ahead and transition here to Julie.
So one comment on the website, we have, outside of Lauren and myself, we have an entirely new board, and they are just finishing some training on membership toolkit. So before our November 12 meeting, we should have everything up to date, they were learning how to download and how to put certain things on there and all that, so it should be updated before our November 12 meeting. And now they just finished their.
If not, between our IT department and Ms. Fletcher, we can, that's our point of having that community. If you need help, we'll help you update, so it's up to date.
Yeah. And I believe our insurance, I put in the office in August, I turned that in, and so our insurance should be up to date on that.
Okay.
So our big one that, on our highlights, was last year, we received another $25,000 from our anonymous donor, who is again giving $25,000 this year, as promised through when Peter graduates. If we need more, there'll be more there. So we still have, we've only taken 10 of it right now, so there's still another $15,000 that is allotted between now and May 22nd or 26th. We did our parent open house last year, where we had the food and the beverages. We had little stickers last year, whereas the parents were walking around on the water bottles, or on their cookies that we inserted, they could scan. So that helped our membership. We did the residency. We did Veterans Day t-shirts, which the administration will receive again this year, because we're going to do a light blue this year with all of the armed service forces and everything on there again, and hand them out at the breakfast on November 11th. So we'll be here that morning. Turning the page, our final exam packs. We did, our first one ever was only in December. This past year, we did December and May, which we realized we're going to do that again because we received a huge amount of things, not just from the students this time, but from the parents who are working and have had to go back to work due to whatever their situation is, and have appreciated that their child actually had something to eat. Because we have, outside of the Reese's, and there's that little sweet treat in there, they do have granola bars and things that they could use for breakfast. And they choose it on their own, so that if there's an allergy, they all know what they can eat and not eat. And we try to accommodate those allergies also, talking to the nurse's office. They help us set stuff aside, and confidentially, we know what we need to do and service them so they can also have something coming through the line. So that's our biggest expense. We usually spend about $10,000 a year on that. We did our, we have a little bit of merchandise left. Star Graduation Bulldogs are the biggest, spending thereafter our decals and yard signs. The new board, those that are following after me will come up with what they want to sell. And I, as a liaison for them, I have promised them some funds that I will get from our donor, so that they will be able to be established after I'm done. Community service last year was fantastic. We had over 100 students again, and community come out and help. Our staff appreciation, we have a lot of things planned for my last year. I've been doing this for 16 years, so can't think of a better school that I want to go out as. I'll still substitute, but I can't think of a better staff than that I want to give. One of the best teacher appreciations I've done in my year. So we have a lot of things planned for that week, and conclude with the luncheon on May 8th. Of course, we'll do the senior awards reception. Our membership is 199 this time. We will go up, usually when the directories come out in the next few weeks, all of a sudden, we get a big push, because they all want their directory. And we have an increase in the staff, we're at 40, which is a record high in eight years if we haven't had 40 staff even, so that's a record, and they'll still be coming in. We already approved some grants this year, and from last year, you'll see, we did the ski club, the planetarium, and the movies. We've given to this year about the Fine Arts Week, the speakers over here that week, we gave $450 for that. We funded the Latin American history field trip. We're looking to replace two migraines in the teachers lounge, because there are students that do things with the staff also, and that would be something I'd help them. We did do our CBS Spotlight, and a few of the bar members and I were here, and handed out breakfast to them, and provided corn and bakery for the administration and the CBS crew. And then we gave them a sweet treat last week, we were here for corn and bakery, and gave them a nice big sweet treat during their dinner break, which was very well received. And we're planning a welcome back when we come back in January. That's usually where I end my report, but I gave you a third page this year, just for transitions, to let you know what we've done and that things are in place. In the eight years I've been here, I've been president for a little over five of them, and a VP for the others. We've done an average of $2,000 beyond the staff appreciation, have done over $20,000 in teacher grants. Going back, you look at some of those highlights, with the yoga blocks, the iFly for the physics class, buying things for gym classes, classroom libraries, executive functioning, donating to the Black History Month, skeletons for the science classes, library, really, we've covered everything over the time. We used to do the RB boutique, have our service days, even with Martin Luther King, and helping with the homeless shelters and the kids being there. We used to do the Guardian Corps with those homeless kids for the veterans, and add one to women, men, and children, so they were covered. We had our student enrichment program. We still do things with Kylie Fletcher, who has been a big help in our transition with the new board members. She's been working with the new board members of ours, she's been helping with the communication to go out, so she's been a big help in there. And we don't have the RB boutique anymore since the COVID, but our, and we used to do the academic leadership, which we turned over to RBF, but we did contribute when we can to them. And then we did the ice cream truck and have had some other ones, so we're looking for a great year. I personally enjoyed working with all of you, and I know there's a lot of transition to occur, but I'm not going anywhere, so my board to follow, which all but Zeta and I will be here, and those that we can recruit, as I began with Dr. Montana in my freshman year, coming in as a freshman parent and being president. I've enjoyed it and look forward to doing more, and continuing my substituting, too, and cheering at the games and all that. So I thank you all for the years here, and look forward to more.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Julie, please take advantage. Kylie will assist you guys if you need help with updating the website. If you need technical assistance, the new board member.
It's so quick, that your income, the way PTO gets money, is it just through memberships?
Primarily through that, and through yard signs and decals. Because we don't want to step on other toes, we don't sell the merchandise like other pub is selling. So we decided a few years ago, they don't say, you're selling pies, we're not going to sell pies. So we're sort of limited, and we don't get the fundraising throughout the year, you know, we don't have concerts or concessions. Because I've done concession stands for hundreds of hours. I've done the concessions, I've answered a few musicals, my kids have been in them for, both of them for eight years, and all that, but we only have really residency to do our fundraising. And then when Kylie came, it helped us to try to do it a little bit beyond the open house. But really, we don't, I used to try to go to football games and all that, but, you know, it's not the same as having concerts and, you know, sporting events, because you only are at select events.
Many years ago, they had a fashion show. People would come and do that. Residency and then the fashion show, so.
Yeah, and the RB boutique was there.
A tremendous amount you're doing without that, because the fashion show would bring in $20,000, so what you're able to accomplish without that, I can't believe it. It's amazing.
Part of budgeting and good stewardship of the money.
Thank you. And next, we have Riverside Brookfield Educational Foundation. Mr. Monti, come on up.
Did you know how to get up here? Do you remember your way?
Yeah. 35 years, it's kind of hard to forget.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks.
Well, just like everybody else, thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to talk about the educational foundation. So for those of you that are new, the education foundation is a little different. We don't have membership, we're not technically a parent group, even though there are parents as trustees. We were created in 1987, when the school was having some serious financial difficulties, and they were talking about closing the school. And it was the superintendent at the time, the school board president at the time, and a couple of other community members who created this entity to help raise money for the school initially, and then it became for educational grants for students and staff. And the big thing was the telethon. And so we had this award-winning telethon that was a nine-hour endeavor that took months and months and months to plan. And unfortunately, that has gone on the wayside because no one has phones anymore. You can't call all the houses in the district. If we called everybody's cell phones, nobody would answer them. So anyway, so we give local scholarships, educational grants for freshmen, sophomores, and juniors, so that they can have that experience and then bring it back to RB. We also oversee five memorial scholarships, so the Julie Morley Scholarship, the Bob Hagner Scholarship, the Otto Hock Scholarship, the Kristen First Scholarship, and we took over the Aaron Semensky Scholarship last year. And then we also help fund the Passarella, the John Passarella Spirit Award, so we fund half of that with another family in the district. So those are the things that we do with the RBF. I'm the president, Kathy Brush, special ed teacher, she is our secretary. Mary Todd Hunter, who's an alum, she's been our secretary, sorry, Kathy is our treasurer. We have nine trustees. It's a three-year term. Officers are supposed to be a year term. This is year five, year six for me, and that's one of our concerns, is finding someone to replace me. And we really need someone in-house. Kylie is wonderful, and you've heard the praises from her all evening, but I also want to take things off her plate, you know, since I'm retired, but I can't because I'm not in the building. So that's been a little bit of an adjustment. The second page, if you look at the little packet, is our financials. So that, we approve them every month, one month behind, and so that's our September treasurer's report. So you can see the various accounts that we have for the different scholarships and just the general fund of money that we get from our fundraising. Our website is www.rbf.tv, and everything is on there, and it's updated regularly. And I want to thank Bill Durkin again, we, he helped us when we changed our insurance, because we, for the longest time, we had the wrong insurance, and no one caught it. And I didn't, I'm not an insurance guy, and then when we finally figured out, Bill was a huge help in helping us getting that taken care of without being a huge expense. Because like I said, we don't have memberships, so we don't, so all our money comes from donations and from fundraising. So we want to try to keep our expenses to a minimum. We meet the third Wednesday usually of every month here at the school. Our next scheduled meeting is November 17th, because we have, we have our third annual magic show event is coming up on Thursday, November 20th. I'll talk about that in a minute. You can see the telethon evolution, so again, I was a part of the telethon for, you know, 28 years, and then the last telethon got canceled the day before COVID. So it was that March 13, 2020, whenever the lockdown happened, that's when we, so we didn't get to do the last telethon, and then we started a raffle. And initially, the raffle was a huge success. Everybody wanted to buy tickets and win money, instead of bidding on little weird faces and things. But what we noticed in four years of the raffle was that the sales pretty much went down almost 50% every year. So the first year, we sold 1,000 tickets, the next year, we sold about 750, and then the next year, we sold 625, and then the last year, we sold only like 500 tickets. And we were really working hard. So last year, we didn't do a raffle. We just, we just relied on donations, and we still raised over $20,000, mostly from alumni and from retirees. And so we were very, very blessed, because usually the telethon brought in about 25,000. Since we stopped doing that, we've been bringing in about 20. Right now, we're already at 23,000 for this year, which is phenomenal, and it's November, so we've had some great. had some great success with the alumni and we're so grateful to the alumni. The other big thing was in 2023, we really started to really push publicity. You know, we were always kind of quiet. And so we've been at the residency, we've been at the open houses, we've been at homecoming. I've been helping with the tours for homecoming. We actually shot a virtual tour, which we're hoping with RV TV that that'll be done shortly, where we shot five hours of the whole school. So that alumni who can't make it back or anybody can, you know, will, obviously, it'll be on the RB website where people can say, here's the tour, and it's me and an alumni and a bunch of surprises. And it's actually been, it's been very exciting. So we're hoping to get that done shortly. And then for this year, again, we have the 30th Annual Magic Show, which is coming up on Thursday, November 20th. That's at 6:30 in the Little Theater. That's Trent James from the Class of 15. He won the talent show when he was a freshman here at RB doing magic, and now he's been doing it his whole career. So that's pretty cool that he fulfilled his, his dream. We had a pop-up a year and a half ago, kind of what, like with the RB boutique, we had all these leftover prizes from the telethon. And the LaGrange Park Antique Mall was so wonderful and helped us raise about $4,000 selling those things that were just sitting in a closet. And my, my parents passed away in 2019, and they were antique people. And I convinced my brother to say, hey, we've got all this stuff sitting in my crawl space that is just sitting there. And so we're donating that to the foundation for another pop-up. And so we're hoping that will generate some decent money for the grants. And then if you look on under, the last thing on the first page of the future. So like I said, you know, we've been around for 38 years. I've been a part of it for 30, this is year 34, I've been a part of it. And we really need someone in-house to really connect with the staff and keep communication easily with the administration. And so we're, we've been struggling to find someone in-house to take over the gavel. And, and I, you don't have to do it the way I've done it. You know, that's, I think that sometimes scares people. But, you know, the foundation, we want it to keep going. It's been such a viable part of RB for the last 38 years. And we're also looking at trying to do some, a couple of people mentioned the corporate sponsors. And we were able to do that when we were doing the telethon. Now that we don't have the telethon, we have not had that support because you're not getting that image in your ad and whatever out there. So we're looking with RV TV to try to do some, do some ads that would generate money for the RBF. And then the last thing I, something new, oh, so the last thing, if you look at the last page or the second page, so we raised $19,735 last year, which again, was mostly from alumni and the retirees. And we gave, we awarded $20,400 in grants. And in the last five years, we've raised just under 79,000 and we've awarded over $82,000. So pretty much every cent that comes in goes out. And that's, that's our goal is to, you know, we're not saving anything. Every, every penny that comes in, we try to award it to kids and staff when they apply for the grants. And that's the last page. If you look at the last page, there's a list. I haven't done that in the past. And so I thought you guys would enjoy seeing what kids have gotten grants for. And it's a whole gambit. We don't do sports grants because the boosters do such a great job of that. But we do fine arts and science and leadership and law and every, you name it, anything that's educational. So that's the 25 people from this, from the past May. So I just wanted to share that with you all tonight.
Dave, you know, we appreciate that.
Thank you so much.
I think Fletcher is working with you to get the word out on the music show or the magic show.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We got that. We just started that, yeah.
Do you feel like people still, you know, have the same, like they know about the foundation like they have in the past?
No, I don't because, because we don't have the telethon. And so I think that hurt us. But like I said, with the change in technology, the, putting a telethon together wasn't really feasible. And so that's why we went the raffle route. And so we were, you know, for a while, that was pretty successful. But like I said, it's, it had a lot of drop-off the last two years.
Or maybe some, some event. I know, like when you look at Riverside, they have all kinds of events in there. You know, they advertise them in the middle just to.
Right, yeah, no. And that's, we, we were looking at the zoo to do a 5K, but the upfront money was insane. They, it was like 20,000 upfront. And that means we'd have to have 200 runners to break even.
Right.
So that's not really a fundraiser if we, and plus, we don't have liquid 20,000 to, to, to front, you know, to seed it. So, so that, the magic show has been, has been nice. It's small. It usually raises about $2,000, $3,000, the magic show. But like I said, the alumni have really come through. As I was telling Dr. Skinkus last May, the alumni have just been amazing. So.
We're looking to reboot the Alumni Achievement Dinner now.
Right, yeah.
That's a project that Kylie, myself, and my new administrative assistant are going to work on. So maybe that's a way we could reintrust.
Yeah, and I was on that committee too.
Right.
So.
Yeah, the foundation has, I mean, you know, my history here and on the board, you, the foundation has given so many grants to students who just wanted to try something, to go to seminars, teachers who wanted to go to seminars.
Yeah, I would love to find out what the, the overall number's been in 37 years. It's gotta be over a million dollars.
Yeah, it's just been phenomenal. When they couldn't find money anywhere, you know, the foundation was always there. Yeah.
Thank you so much, Mr. Monti.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
For the record, the RBEF's website is in good condition. Everything is up to date. So thank you, Mr. Monti, on that.
Next, we don't have a president's report next, but we do have a superintendent's report.
Do you want to do a president's report?
I don't want to do a president's report.
All right. Superintendent's report. Let me get to it, please. Okay, superintendent's report for October 28th, Senate Bill SB 637. We are in the final phases of drafting agreement with the zoo. Actually, up until this meeting, I'm still exchanging notes with our legal counsel on final touches to go back with the zoo. But we are really close to having that. So our goal is to work with them and, with the zoo and the forest reserve, hopefully try to get this approved before the first of the year. Elizabeth Hennessy from Raymond James will be, will attend the November board meeting to present funding options through taxes on capital improvement bonds, for site improvements and safety enhancements. The finance advisory council is scheduled to meet November 3rd. That's Deanna and Nick Caputo, so that we can go through some of those options. I believe we're still, with any of those options, we'll still be able to do a stair-step tax decrease for our taxpayers, which will be appreciated. So it's timed up nice. The auditor, the goal is to have the auditor present to the board in December. Dr. Smetana is now back and is working with the auditor to get the board a final draft before the December meeting. Parent organizations, as you heard tonight. So I just want to take a minute to personally thank each of those organizations, its members, for all the time, effort, you know, that they donate and provide to RB, the students, and just overall great experience for our environment, for our culture. So thank you to our parent groups. You heard this name a lot tonight, Kylie Fletcher. So it fell right after the last time we did recognition since September, like a few days after that, we had the CBS Spotlight. That CBS Spotlight is still available on our website. But Kylie orchestrated that. She reached out to CBS and made contacts and ended up, you know, getting the, the first one for the school year. And it went off great. And the highlight videos are on the website. And it was just a first-class event, really showcasing all the great things that are going on at RB. So compliments to Kylie and the work on the CBS Spotlight. And I'm sure the board, you know, that was the purpose when we created this position, was the community engagement, working with our parent organizations to help them. Because it, full circle, comes back to the kids and to the high schools. So I just wanted to take a moment to recognize Kylie and her hard work. We talked about finance advisory. Personnel advisory meeting will be scheduled to review the enrollment staffing projections before the November board meeting. That's Nick Novak from the Raina Gasko, I believe. Tammy sent out the calendar invites for that. Two notes not listed, you know, the board packet goes out Friday, so if things come up. So the first thing I want to touch on is, I think the Booster Club touched on it in their presentation, but we have our first playoff game that we haven't had in a while. We're hosting a playoff game on Friday, which is Halloween, not ideal, but it looks like there's a lot of school districts in the state that are using Friday for the first round. I think it creates some type of competitive advantage. We're having it at 7:30 because it conflicts with Buick the Zoo. So Buick the Zoo ends, so there's a good hour or so, hour and a half where there's transition time. So that's why we're doing 7:30. It also allows Rolling Meadows time to wait for rush hour to die down and transport their team. Being Halloween, I thought it'd be important to update the board. You know, expectations will be emailed out, but it is not an RB event. It's an IHSA event. So no passes will be allowed. It has to be, everybody has to buy a ticket. We will have our three school security officers there that are our, our employees that conceal carry. But also, we will have Brookfield PD, we'll have two officers on that side since that's Brookfield's side of the district. So we'll have plenty of security and email expectations will be going out. I believe there's no masks. There's going to be a couple of things being Halloween, but just to make sure that we have a safe environment for the playoff game. And we're expecting a large crowd. So come early. If you can walk or ride your bike or something of that nature, consider that as well.
A question about that. I know tickets are on sale.
They're going to be sent out in the link, but I think you can buy them online at GoFan.
Right. Is there a cap on the number of tickets that are going to be sold? And what will happen?
I don't believe.
If we exceed the cap.
I don't see if we'll exceed the cap. I think we'll be okay.
Okay. I have high expectations. I'm expecting a crowd. I just want to make sure we're prepared in the event.
Hopefully, the weather cooperates too.
That too. Okay.
Can they be bought at the door, tickets?
Yes, there will be ticket sales. I believe, I don't have Hector or Hector's on vacation this week. I believe they can be.
Okay.
Okay. I will have that all go out in the email and I'll put that in the boards Friday update, all Friday morning.
Okay.
Okay. Last thing I want to touch on. Tammy, if you could help me a little bit with this, I wanted to, Dr. Freitas covered something last week in his principals report. And I think it would be a good idea just to touch on a little bit. The, we covered some school safety updates in his principals report. And with the heightened sensitivity of what's been going on in broad view and in the area, you know, I did field a few questions from the board. And I wanted to look at a couple of things and go into this in a little more detail. RB's website obviously is on the screen for the board. Tammy, if you go under Parents and click on the school safety, these are where we place all of our safety letters and anything that's related to our presentations, on crisis presentation, safety protocols, our ALICE protocols, lockdown, school shooter, those types of events. And if we send out any safety letters to families, as you can see, that last letter under safety letters was the immigration enforcement procedures that we sent out back in January. Thank you, Tammy, for clicking on that. So if the board can see that on the screen above there, this gives our statement that's also on our new enrollment page as well as our equity page, where it just talks about how RB is an open enrollment school for all students who live in the district regardless of race, ethnicity, religion, national origin, housing status, or immigration status. You'll notice the open enrollment and the immigration status are linked. That will take you directly to the ISBE resources that are available for immigrant students and their rights for free public education. If you click on the immigration status link in the letter, that should take you to the ISBE resources for, for immigrant students as well as, you know, some, some other public websites that the ISBE has put out that can assist families, undocumented families. I also linked in here, we worked on this week, linking the two board policies under our administrative procedures. So I think a board member had a good question. Mr. Williams said like, hey, this is a good letter. This is something that maybe needs to be more front and center. So then we went through, we actually have this information on two other places on the website. Tammy, if you can go back to the website, to the main page. So if a family moves into the district, whether they're residents, citizens or undocumented, under the enroll now, we have the same, we have it in the quick tabs, which is to the left, enroll a new student. And then we have that opening statement there again, that we're an open school district and it has the open enrollment and the immigration status resources. We also have these resources on our equity page. If you go under District. And Dr. Freitas covered all this, but I think he just kind of read through it. And so one of the other board members, Ms. Gasko, recommended like, hey, can we take a minute to go and show people where these are at? So these, this statement is also on the Equity Action Plan and that, a statement where the school district, regardless of your status, we have an open enrollment policy. And it also references again, those ISBE resources. Tammy, if you can click to the main page one more time. That letter that I showed the board that has our procedures, you know, in the event of immigration enforcement, you know, procedures and what we worked on with legal counsel and sent out to the families in January. Tammy, if you scroll down a little bit more, thank you, right there, news and announcements. I do think we can put this, and I think, you know, based on where we are currently, it would help to maybe have this centered somewhere on the homepage. I do think, so what Kylie and I, what Kylie has told me is the way that our, this is a brand new website that we had redesigned last year based on the stakeholder feedback survey that we did. So those news articles update regularly. So every time we add a news article, one slide to the right, they eventually drop off. And so what we're going to work on is maybe we could have one that just permanently recycles with those immigration resources for the next couple of weeks. So for families to have that and have access to that as we have the heightened, you know, alertness that's going on in the community right now. So if the board's okay with that, I'd like, we'll make that modification. And I know some of you saw the questions that were submitted. I think this will help address that in more detail.
Yeah, I definitely think that it's great that we've cleaned some of that up. One of the issues I was noticing is that, I mean, if you know where to look, you can find this stuff. But if you don't, typically what, at least how I would approach it, if I'm looking at a website that I'm not familiar with, I'm going to go to the search bar and type in subject matter. So I think just making sure that, that the user friendliness of it extends not just to where, when you know where to look, but when you are just searching on the website itself.
Okay.
That when it, when it comes, when you're, you know, going to the search bar, it actually is a useful tool. And it, it's better now. It's better now. But I think websites are always a thing you constantly have to improve. That's just what, the nature of what they are, given the, the dynamic stuff that's coming in and out of it all the time.
Okay. Good. Okay. Everybody else good with that?
I think too, the letter, we could put a date on it because it currently has no date.
So we talked about that originally when we put that out there and we sent it in January. We thought about putting no date on it on because we'd like to leave that on there so that it doesn't look outdated.
Well, I like the date on it though, because it alerts us to the fact that it is an outdated letter, like that it was put out back in January when things were much calmer, when things weren't as aggressive as they are now. But I think if we say, hey, look, new date, new information, relevant information, I think it just.
That also.
It's helpful.
Not to interrupt you, but that also might help like search optimization too. Like when you put a date on it, if it's new information, when you put a new date on it, that would definitely pop up in search optimization of it. I did notice that the District 96 website is dated, January of '25, their letter about immigration.
What would be the expectation of updating it?
Given the circumstances, what are happening.
I think our procedures won't change much. And I do think the ISBE resources, I think we're leaking through the governing body that's who oversees the school. So therefore, we're providing the same resources the State Board of Education has. So if they update their websites, if parents click the link, we'll have access to those same resources.
I didn't see when, when you were going over, did, did you have the link to the policy?
All the policies, yes. I had Kylie Hunter, 7150 on there and seven, or what was the other, seven, 340.
I think that's the probably what, I mean, I'm on the policy committee, so maybe that's why I think it's important. But it's, I think it's, it's important to highlight that this has been a longstanding policy of the school.
Yes. And, and one other thing is we did, remember the board approved, we paid. And one other thing is, we did, remember, the board approved, we paid, we bought the highest-end service for the new website so that we have availability to how many languages?
Our top 10.
Top 10 are up abandoned, so it could be translated into our top 10 based on our Okay, that concludes my report for October 28.
Thank you. So when can the, when can we expect the website to be updated? Sorry.
I would imagine this week, if not tomorrow.
Okay, thank you. Our Assistant Superintendent's report. Dr. Santana.
Good evening. Tonight, I'll provide the board with financial information through the month of September, which represents 25% of our fiscal year. I'll begin with the monthly summary report. You'll see the total operating revenue for the month was $1,054,022, with 52% coming from registration fees, 38% coming from evidence-based funding, which is our state funding, and then 5% coming from local revenue. The total operating expenditures for the month were $2,443,204, with 84% towards salary and benefits, 5% towards building-level supplies, and then 4% for operations and maintenance. On the monthly financial statements, you'll see the summary of fund balances, so the district has been deficit-spending this fiscal year due to a delay in property tax revenue. I'll touch on this later in the board meetings, there's a separate agenda item, but the district will need to approve a working cash interfund loan to use some of the money in working cash to pay bills in the education fund for the next two months, for November and December, because you'll see that we are running low in that account. We're also running low, we're not going to have enough money in debt service, but there's a statute that requires us to pay debt service first, and so we don't need a, we don't need a board resolution for that. The summary of revenues shows that the district has received 6.63% of our budgeted revenue for the year. This amount is lower than last fiscal year of almost 37%, and again, that's because the property tax that normally comes in in August has not come in yet. The summary of expenditure shows that the district has spent 26.28% of the budgeted expenditures for this year, and this amount is very similar to this time of last year. And then, as always, I included the statement of revenue and expenditures for the board accounts for the month of September. I was able to upload our budget that was approved in September into our financial system, so now when you're looking at the budgeted column versus what we have spent, those budget numbers are accurate. And then I've included the activity account summary as well. Additionally, this month, I have two other reports. The first is the paid facility rental for the first quarter. This only includes paid rentals during the time period of July 1st through September 30th. For the first quarter, you can see that the district collected $6,333.75 in revenue, and expended $1,822 of the revenue from this quarter. A majority of it, 61%, comes from facility space charges, as it normally does, with the majority of rentals from the Field House followed by the main gym. And then lastly, I included, there was a Township Treasurer Board meeting on October 15th. I serve as the district's representative in that group, and I provided the presentation from the most recent board meeting.
Kristin, in regards to the Township Treasurer's office, have we, are there, the districts that left Lyons Township, have they, is that official now? Are they participants in the Proviso Township Treasurer with us?
They are participants, but they are not voting members, so they're more as like a contracted service. So they can attend the board meetings, but they don't have a seat at the table, they don't have a say. That's based off of the statute.
Okay, but their investment income will help us, help increase more interest in our investment pool?
Yes, yes. Outside of not having a vote at the table, they, you would think that they are part of the Township Treasurer. So we pool all of our money together for investments, and that's probably the biggest benefit to having the additional members as a part of the township.
I have two questions for you. The paid facility rental, is that, for the first quarter, is that pretty typical, year over year, or does that basically stay the same?
It does not. It varies. I would say this quarter is a little low, but it's all dependent on timing. So it's not the, it's not the rentals that occurred during that time period, it's only the-
Ones that are paid during that time period.
The ones that are paid, correct.
I got you.
So sometimes it's a timing issue depending on, you know, when different feeder groups or things of that nature submit their payments.
So based on what it's been rented, I mean, maybe you don't know the answer to this, what it's been, what our facilities are being rented for this year, is it on track? Is it more, is it less than, I mean, not that we've collected, but what we anticipate collecting?
It's hard to tell just based off of the first quarter, because you could have first quarter low, and then second quarter could be, right, a huge spike, and a lot of the rentals don't.
They typically just-
They're not booked at this, at this point for that far.
That far in advance, I see.
But I would say rentals are pretty consistent, anywhere between, in general, revenue is $80,000 to $100,000, and, you know, a whole year usually falls within that range.
Got you.
The whole year.
The other question I had was about the, when I was reading the board report, they were saying the property tax, they're anticipating it being six to eight months after when we would normally get it? Is that what, is that what the report said? Did I misread that?
We normally get it, I don't know, I'd have to go back and read it, but we normally get it in August.
August, yeah.
And we'll probably get it sometime in December.
Oh, okay.
But not-
So it's not that much longer.
But it could be, also be January. So we don't, we don't anticipate having any of the revenue in order, in time to pay our debt service.
Right.
Which is a, could be a big concern if we didn't have a fund balance-
Yeah.
-in addition to the two months of bills in our ed funds.
Right. I just, when I saw that in the report, I thought it stuck out, six to eight months seems like a long.
I will double-check if this is typo or correction before we upload it.
Is that the interfund loan that you're asking the board to approve tonight or be able to first read tonight, correct?
Right.
Correct.
Okay. And then what will be tough is that if the tax bills don't go out till December or January, then you'll have to worry about collection if people aren't doing them in escrow.
Correct.
And then the next bill payment will go out in March.
Correct.
Right, so people will be getting their second tax installment bill 30 to 60 days instead of four to six months apart.
Sometimes they do a slight delay, and it doesn't go right out in March then, or they put it out, but it's not due, but I haven't heard that this time around, but I know that they tried to do that the last time around, they could find it a month.
Okay. Any other questions for Kristin, or should I say Dr. Santana?
Welcome back.
Yes, welcome back. All right. Next, we have our Student Advisors' Report.
All right, so we're starting off with teaching and learning in October, on the 29th, which is tomorrow, we have the pre-ACT 89 for freshman students. This is going to take place at 8:00 AM in the Field House. We are wishing the best of luck to the approximately 400 freshmen who are taking the first step toward college admissions, including my younger brother. And, yeah, wishing the best of luck to them as they start their journey.
On November 11th, we have, from 6:00 to 7:00 PM, RB is hosting a College Planning Tips for Freshmen presentation in the Little Theater. This provides freshmen with a great opportunity to get ahead on their college preparation. Freshmen and their parents are invited to attend to learn about financial tips, college visit suggestions, and other college planning ideas to follow. Under School Culture and Operations, on October 27th, just yesterday, seniors had their last chance for senior yearbook photos from 7:30 AM to 3:30 PM. We're really thankful to the prestigious photography crew who returned once more to give us this opportunity.
And then in November, from the 4th through 6th, that's when the placement testing will be taking place, but we recently sent out the Class of 20, Class of 2030 RB Just Welcome Letter, which includes information about pre-ACT testing, future Bulldog Night, and registration for the upcoming freshman class. This is sent out every year, I remember getting mine. It's changed a little bit with the SAT and ACT changes, but otherwise it's basically the same info, giving them a little bit of a head start to what they can expect for their start at RB.
On November 11th, RB will be hosting our annual Veterans Day ceremony from 8:30 AM to 10:45 AM. At 8:30, there will be a breakfast offered to all the veterans, and after the breakfast, our ceremony will begin. And our, sorry, our music department, including our three choir ensembles and our band, will be performing the Veterans Day medley representing each branch of the US Army. And then following the ceremony, students will have the opportunity to speak to veterans themselves, as each veteran will be assigned to a classroom to talk about their experiences and allow students to learn about the individuals who serve our country.
And lastly, we have the Fall Play, The Great Gatsby, from November 13th through 16th. This will take place at 7:00 PM from, on the 13th through 15th, and then 2:00 PM on the 16th, and it's in the auditorium. We're very excited to bring this classic story to the stage for the RB community. We're currently working on offering premium seating, chaining that up a little bit, so ticket prices may change from the usual $5 for students and seniors and $10 for adults. But other than that, we hope you can all come out to support us and see what we've been working very hard on. This is a story that many people know, so it'll be very fun to see interpretation that we decide to take. And then for Activities and Athletics, on October 28th, there's a volleyball regionals, Varsity Girls versus York Community High School. This is at 7:00 PM at York Community High School.
October 31st, as we all know, we have our varsity football teams playing for the IHSA State Playoffs against Rolling Meadows. This will be a home game, and as was mentioned earlier, students will have to pay a fee for this game due to IHSA rules. All fans must purchase tickets, they can purchase tickets in advance through Girl Fan for $7, or you may purchase tickets at the gate for $8, cash only. November 1st, all winter sports are opening for registration. Students will be able to register for sports on RB's website under Athletics. And then winter sports opening for registration are Boys and Girls Basketball, Boys and Girls Bowling, Competitive Cheerleading, and Dance, Girls Gymnastics, Boys Swimming, and lastly, Boys and Girls Wrestling. On November 2nd, we have, oh, sorry, on November 1st also, our Varsity Girls Cross Country Team will be running their IHSA sectional game at Ledge Memorial Park in Hensell at 10:00 AM.
And then we also, on the same day, we have the Varsity Boys Cross Country at 11:00 AM at the same location right afterwards. And that is all we have, thank you.
Thank you so much for your report.
Yeah, I just want to share, I was, had a chance to talk with one of the veterans in town, and they have a 40-year history of some family member at RB. And the person I was talking to was 80 and was so excited to come back to RB, has come for the veterans meeting, is so thrilled to see the improvements of the school, walk around, talk with the students. So your event, it's not boring, it's something that the veterans look forward every year, and they just feel so honored that you do that for them. So, you know, it's really appreciated. Don't think it's like, oh, they probably don't care. Yes, they really do.
We have fun every year going to it. It's nice talking with the veterans, their experience. It was very interesting.
Yeah, so he was very excited, he was 80, he's like, oh, no, I am going to be at RB this, you know, Veterans Day, I'm going to be there for the breakfast, okay?
Thank you so much for your report. Next, we have an opportunity for visitor statements. Is there anybody here for visitor statements this evening? Yes? Okay, before, I'm going to read a statement, so it comes on up, "The Board of Education welcomes and encourages the participation of its citizens in the business of the school district. There are two points in the meeting where visitor statements are scheduled. Citizens are welcome to raise questions or make comments at either one. Comments will be limited to three minutes per individual and cannot be combined. Please note, the Board of Education will not answer questions or engage in dialogue during visitor comments. If a person would like additional time to address the board, such a request should be submitted in writing 48 hours before the meeting to the superintendent." Welcome.
Hi.
Hello. Your name, please?
I'm Chloe Ivan, and I am currently a senior at RB. And I'd like to address some concerns about RB's policy towards the Immigration and Customs Enforcement, or ICE. ICE is a huge concern for our Hispanic community, as many have been brutally detained and deported. ICE's behavior is also escalating as the federal government allows them to continue their violence. ICE has been in the area around RB and puts the Hispanic population of RB at risk. I demand that the administration release a statement on the ICE crisis. Currently, there are 44, 44% of students at RB are Hispanic. While RB remains neutral, it is risking the safety of a large majority of students at RB. The community demands RB reissue a statement on what they will do to protect the students of RB, as the current policy in place puts one man, Dr. Freitas, in charge of protecting 700-plus students. But what good, what good does the current policy do if RB itself remains neutral? It is unacceptable and needs to be addressed. Currently, RB's Hispanic students don't have their basic safety guaranteed by the administration. Teachers are also unable to provide resources to their students. Therefore, I demand that RB install a system that informs students about the whereabouts of ICE in general to RB's location and provide a clear information page on the school's website. RB already has a community-wide information sharing page, Parent Square. RB should send information on ICE's location and whereabouts in order to inform students when to leave the building, as well as providing a resource page to families. RB prides itself as being in the center of our community, and RB has been really good at supporting and providing resources to help those who need it. However, RB remains silent now as it neglects to acknowledge the issues surrounding a large number of people in the community. However, many other schools in our surrounding area have issued statements. Schools such as LT, OPRF, West Chicago, East Laiden, Proviso, and the Chicago Public Schools have accessible websites and policies dedicated to immigrant families. They are public schools. RB can do this, too, and remaining neutral in order to follow the law or code of conduct is not what is morally right. Protecting faculty, students, and families is what is morally right for a school that cares about its community. If RB truly cares about its students, then it should allow students and faculty to speak out, and it should pursue methods to keep students safe. ICE is becoming a bigger and bigger issue that RB has to address for everyone. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, good job.
Thank you.
I have some papers I'll be passing around.
Hello, I'm Jean Salapis, a student of RB and a resident of Brookfield. I come to you today with great disappointment in our school's lack of action to protect my classmates and community, but after I heard you guys were talking about updating our website, I was very happy about that, because an issue I was having was how difficult it was to find our statement on ICE where it is currently on the website. Right in front of you, I have screenshots of the OPRF website. I believe that they laid out their information and resources very clearly, and I would suggest following their lead of putting many resources on the actual website. The paper that we have now has highlighted words, as we saw, and that's difficult to know, like, oh, I have to click that to get to resources. Having those websites clearly outlined on the website is very important for accessibility for our community. I also believe that our school should be sending out emails to families more often about this in both English and Spanish. I believe that we should put QR codes around the school so students are able to scan them and have the resources on their phone, maybe it takes it to the RB, updated RB website. I also believe that the idea of having it dated is very important, so we know how well updated the website is. That is another aspect that I liked of the OPRF website. And I also, just making people aware of who to go to. Right now, that is Dr. Freitas. I was not aware of that until I, like, searched very hard for that website. I feel like that needs to be made more public, maybe over an announcement one day, over a phone call to all of the phones in the district, saying, "Contact Dr. Freitas if you are having issues with ICE." This will help our community stay safe. Our school is a huge part of Riverside, Brookfield, and North Riverside in getting information out. So it is our school's responsibility to keep our students safe by promoting resources. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name's Zalder Mendez. I'm here to read a letter, a statement on behalf of a student who wishes to remain anonymous. Here's her statement. "I'm a student of Riverside Brookfield, and I myself am an immigrant. Every day, I hear the same thing. In RB, we love you, we care about you."
In RB, we love you, we care about you, and we have your back. But I don't want to just hear it, I want to know and feel that it is true. Currently, we haven't been informed of any procedure existent about ICE. If ICE comes into the school, if I'm outside doing sports and ICE stops me, if ICE asks me a question about my status, what do I do? Is the school protecting me? I don't know. I haven't heard a single word from any person in the school. I don't even know if it is safe for me to present this statement, so I am doing it anonymously." Who do I refer ICE agents to? What security measures is the school taking? Is this something I can talk about with my counselor or the school psychologist? The school should have a clear and well-communicated procedure in case ICE comes into the school, because we, the students, deserve to feel safe, protected, and informed at all times. Many students come from immigrant families like me, and the growing presence of immigration officers creates fear, confusion, and panic. By establishing a procedure and making sure both staff and students know what to do, we can ensure that everyone's rights are respected and that no one is put in unnecessary danger. Students should be informed about their rights and what to do when an ICE officer questions them, in or out of the school. We should have resources that help us students. Schools should make us feel protected and inform us of such information. This is not a situation where we can just be neutral, because this goes beyond politics. This is humanity and empathy. I don't just want to hear that I'm loved and cared for, I want to know and truly feel it. Thank you.
Good job.
Hello, my name is Sophia Salas. I am a Hispanic student here at Riverside Brookfield, and I really want to appreciate, I want to thank you guys and appreciate you guys for the change you've made with the website. But I would like to say that we cannot remain neutral or censor the students for speaking out against what's happening in our community, at our school. We have been told by Dr. Freitas that the school itself has decided to remain neutral on the topic of ICE. While I can see where he's coming from, I also do not see why, as back in 2023, during the first semester of school, in the middle of the day, Dr. Freitas had made a statement saying, "Can we please take a moment of silence for the victims in Israel?" While I full-heartedly agree, there was no mention of Palestine and their victims, which makes me wonder, how come you weren't neutral then, but now you want to be neutral? It's not fair to the students here at Riverside Brookfield and our community. It's not an issue of political neutrality. They do not need to take a controversial stance, they need to keep students safe. What is going on is beyond the law now. As we have all known, the Supreme Court of Justice has made it okay for ICE agents to officially profile students. 44% of Hispanic students at RB share those traits that those ICE agents are looking for. How can we be sure that our school is protecting us and protecting our people? It has been made clear that there was two students, two kids, sorry, two kids our age in North Riverside who were detained. That is within our community now, and we cannot keep treating this as a taboo subject in schools, and we should be allowed to talk about these issues with our teachers and our fellow classmates. This isn't a political issue, as my classmates have said, it's a moral issue. The main goal should always be to keep your students safe. Thank you.
Good evening, Board, I'm Antonio Navarro Garcia. I'm a Hispanic student and senior at RB High School. I'm also a resident in North Riverside. Our world and my world has changed in the last nine months, seven days, and 5,376 hours. I respect that doctors think this provided a message for how the school and Dr. Freitas would handle immigration enforcement personnel, to help and protect the 43% of Hispanics that are students here. That's over 700 students, and that's not including the staff or faculty that are at potential risk. Even as a US citizen, I am at risk. Why? Because of the color of my skin and nationality. I should not have to carry a Know My Rights card when I walk home. I'm a student, and I'm a minor, but yet I'm forced to know my rights to keep myself safe. I stand here requesting more support for Hispanics like me in our school. I'm requesting digital resources to be posted on the student and parent portals. I'm requesting printed resources that students can grab and have access to. I am scared, and so are my classmates. Kids shouldn't be scared to go to school just because of the color of their skin or their nationality. Schools should be a place of learning. Thank you.
Good job.
Do we have any other visitors? Comments?
I know we typically don't say anything, and I won't, I will just say, thank you so very much for being vulnerable with us tonight. I appreciate your comments. Thank you.
Old business, we have life safety updates. At this point in time, there are no life safety or capital improvements in regards. Dr. Smithana, do we have an update on the solar panels at this point?
I'll have a more comprehensive update in November, including the board project.
I have not received, in regards to the other old business item, Avatni Engineering Agreement, I have not received an update. So there was a question submitted about the guaranteed mask price or not-to-exceed price? Remember, that was the first draft that was submitted, and so our counter to them was we're going to put it in. We sent that to them, so they're in the process of responding to our legal counsel's comments.
So what you sent in the update this week was an older one, or that's a newer one? Because you sent something in the update, right?
I think I just sent the general terms of what we were looking to do.
Okay, so we're still waiting on that?
Yes, we're still waiting on a final.
Got it.
And then, so we should have two agreements hopefully coming to the board here in November, right? We should have the engineering and the zoo a whole full November, December. And that would take us to new business, Ms. Gasko.
We've got the inter-fund loan from Working Cash Fund. Dr. Smithana?
Yes, good evening, this is a first read. As I mentioned earlier, the district expects to receive the second installment of the 2024 Cook County real estate taxes. You know, historically, it's due August 1st. We anticipate receiving it sometime in December or even in January. So as a result, we will need to do an inter-fund loan from the Working Cash Fund to the Education Fund. We can't make that loan without board approval. So we would be recommending that we do a loan in the amount of not to exceed $5 million in interest money from the Working Cash Fund to the Ed Fund. And then, how that would work is the Township Treasurer would make the transfer based upon the funds that we need. And then, when the property tax come in, it automatically pays back the Working Cash Fund. We did this, the last time we did this, I believe, was in October of 2022. Again, this is a first read. We will need it to pay bills in November, but when working with the Township Treasurer, they said approval in November would allow us to then make that transfer and pay bills at the same time.
Kristen, will we do that? Do you take the lump sum, or do you take what you need each month?
They would take what they need each month. But we don't anticipate needing, that's why the resolution would say up to $5 million, and then they would just take what they need each month.
And hopefully receive it in December.
Correct. And then, Dr. Smithana mentioned something about escrow. So what typically happens in a situation like this is, you know, the escrow money comes in quicker, and so even if we don't receive all of it, as soon as those bills are released, we usually shortly thereafter will receive the escrow money. And then, after that, all the other money will come in.
Do we have a general idea of what percentage of it is escrow money and what isn't?
I don't remember off the top of my head from when we dealt with this in the last, I'd have to look it up. So again, it's a first read, but we did receive some questions from Ms. Salas, but I believe I addressed them all. So if there are any additional questions, I can answer them now or answer them at the November board meetings.
I think you're going to answer the questions that were submitted.
Moving on, we've got our Board of Education discussion items. Anything on the revised district goals?
I did not receive any feedback from anybody. So we'll let them sit out there for one more session in November and then engage in another discussion. So please remember to provide any comments you have on the district goals.
Next, we have the IASB Resolutions Report. This is a second go-around, correct?
Yeah, just to update, so anybody who's going, because as a board, you will give direction. I will go as your representative. The Illinois Association of School Boards is our professional association. They give us training, there's a lot of webinars, they direct us to resources. What I love most about our annual meeting is there's a delegate meeting. We have over 800 school boards in the state, but every school board only has one vote. Chicago has over 100,000 students, and they have certain concessions in Illinois School Code, in the laws, but not at this meeting. They still only have one vote. And what the delegate meeting does is they will solicit resolutions all throughout the year that are important for school boards. And that meeting will refine them on which ones that they will lobby for with your state lawmakers. They'll go to Springfield, and at that meeting, usually we have about 450 delegates from all over the state. It's interesting to hear the needs of Southern Illinois compared to, you know, we are so wealthy here, I don't even think we realize how wealthy we are. And when I hear the needs of some of our downstate districts and, you know, what they're asking, you know, for our association to lobby for, so there's one, the easy one there, is one resolution, and they are talking about, and so you'll, I hope you had the chance to look at, was the school bus, because there's been some safety here. Coming several, a couple of years from now, the school buses have to have these seatbelts, and some school buses are going to have to be retrofitted. We don't use school buses here, we use them for special transportation where they're equipped, but there are many districts in the state of Illinois that do rely on transportation, especially rural schools where transportation's quite a bit. And they are not going to have the funds to do some of this retrofitting and to get up to speed to this unfunded mandate. So the association is recommending that we do adopt, they are asking that the states, since they have this unfunded mandate, to have the safety features on the bus, that they set up a pot of money, so to speak, where schools can get a grant to help them provide these updates to their buses.
So the board is aware, just the resolutions and lawyers referencing, we get one vote, and all this vote is, is then that based on the majority of people that vote that day, so lawyers are delegate, it just is where the, i.e. the school board association will focus their efforts and lobby. They do not have a judicial piece in this process.
Correct.
You know, it's just, where should they, as a membership, it's basically the annual membership vote of where should we focus our resources for the next year.
Right. And so they might, there might be six items that they will focus the resources of the association to lobby, to get lawmakers to vote in favor of these issues. Right here, it's financing public, submitting, what do they call it, school bus safety funding. They want the state to put aside some money for districts that do not have the resources to have these safety features, to be able to apply for this small grant and be able to get it. And so our association is recommending that we do adopt, and that we, you know, give our blessing for them to go lobby for that. So that's up to you, you know, how does the board feel about that?
So should the board review these again, and then in November, we should give you kind of like a final tally of what we're thinking? So that it's closer to the date of the conference, and you have a clearer direction?
You can, okay. So that would be on page 16, so that's the background of it. Not all resolutions that are presented at the floor are equally important to every district. So for us, it's not a big deal, you know, we don't need to get a grant to retrofit our ancient buses because we're picking up students for two hours away. But we are part of the state, and, you know, their bias is always that school boards have local control, that the school board does what's best for its own area. The other main part, if you notice, was their constitution that runs our association. A lot of the language, as they said, was really cleaned up. The first section just talked about the different classes. The votes for the resolutions are only school boards. We are the people that get to vote on how they use their time and efforts in Springfield. Most of the other stuff was just really cleaning up. The only one big change was their officers that they are recommending, or that they would like to go to a two-year term. So when you get a new president of IASB, it takes several months just to train, you know, somebody to get up to speed, and then your term is done. So they would like to move that to a two-year term. It's still short, and then, you know, there's the person, that's the vice that moves into the chair, but they felt like the continuity would be smoother, and there'd be less, you know, where your training stops, starts, up, starts. So that's probably the biggest change, when I read through all, you know, the changes. They did a nice job at highlighting, crossing out, that was really the one addition that they made, was to make it to the two years.
So we should come prepared to vote?
Yeah, so, yeah, what you would do is say, if there was any, or if you had a question on any of those articles, when you look through them, you'll find it's cleanup of the associations, their constitution, the regulating procedures.
I would recommend a way to keep this more efficient for the board, is if you're going, if you, as an individual board member, have concerns supporting the recommendation, only make notation of those, so that we're not sitting here and have to go through each individual one. If we see anybody have issue with a recommendation on one, that seemed to work best in the past. So only if you feel like you don't want to support one's in the board.
Yeah, there's a chart in the little book, I can, we'll send you a picture, and then you can just send that, and that way people can check that off, it'd be easy.
Okay, very good. Board of Education operating procedures, I didn't see any questions come through.
No, Laura, you wanted an extra one, are you good with those?
Yeah, those are fine.
Okay. Are we really at the second opportunity for visitor statements? I don't see anyone left. So no second opportunity visitor statements? Any discussion items for future meetings?
Maybe at that meeting or meeting where it seems, where it fits, we just had parent conferences, and so I don't know if we can get a report, like, because I think that's part of our communication goal as a board. I think it's one, a very important communication, are we reaching out to our parents? Are our parents engaged? We want our students engaged, that's a key area. So like, what percentage parents come? Does every parent get a spot if they want a spot? And if there aren't enough spots, how do we handle that, you know? So maybe...
I have Dr. Freitas included in this principal report, because we have a lot of reports coming up between the auditor, present, and all my projections.
It could even wait a month, so, but I think it'd be good to hear how that went.
Okay.
And then, I'd also like to add, capitalizing on the students who came in and had some, a very valid request, could Dr. Freitas give us an update?
Yes, he's out of town this week, but I'm going to sit down with Ms. Fletcher tomorrow. I think there's a few things that we might be able to do just on our website, but also that there's some simple things we can do that maybe we'll address some of their student concerns to help a little more.
Right, because they did come in with a very clear list of pretty doable requests, so if Dr. Freitas, we can add that for next week, or for the next time.
Okay.
I think also our prior student services might be part of those requests.
Right.
When they talked about, can we talk to our counselors?
Yeah, I think there's some things that we could just, we have some things in place, I think we got to do a better job of getting some things out there, as we saw tonight. I think the students will appreciate to see that the stuff is there, but maybe make it more accessible for them, a little more user-friendly. I think those are some easy fixes that can be addressed. And then we'll, Dr. Freitas will give an update next meeting.
Yeah, and I don't know if, like, you know, like, when there's a tragedy at schools, they have counselors on sites, you know, or they can have some talks or forums. I don't know if this is a good time to consider something like that.
Okay.
Next, we have matters for closed session, appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body, student discipline, individual student matters, purchase, sale, or lease of real property, probable, imminent, or pending litigation, collective negotiations, and school safety. litigation, collective negotiations, and school safety. Can we get a motion to go into?
Samued.
Closed session.
District Director, can you read the moment?
Closed session. The Board of Education, Township Public School, District 208, Cook County, Illinois, enters closed session with the purpose of considering the closed session matters as presented in the October 28th, 2025 Board of Education.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Williams, roll call, is that a roll call?
Roll call.
Mr. Budo?
Yes.
Mr. Durkin?
Yes.
Ms. Gaska?
Yes.
Ms. Russka?
Yes.
Mr. Novak?
Yes.
Thank you, guys, good job tonight.
Thank you.